I am going to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. This is the regular council meeting for the city of Minatrista, January 20th. Our first order of business is to do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please join me. Thank you. With that, I'll make some brief introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen. I'm the mayor of Minatrista. Next to me is council member Patricia Thol, council member Mark Vanderlinde, council member Pam Mortenson, and council member Christians. And soon to take his seat is our city -- with WSB, our city engineer, Paul Hornby. And next to me, to my right, is our interim administrator, Mike Barone. Next to him is our sit-in for Mr. Beatty, Sarah Sansala, also an attorney with Kennedy and Graven. And next to her is David Abel, who is our city planner or community development director. And next to him is Mr. Paul Falls, who is our chief of police. With that, approval of our agenda, I just have a couple of items. One, under 6E, we're going to add exploring the HR/Communication Specialist position. We talked about that at our work session, so we'll just briefly discuss that. Next, under staff's report, staff will make a brief update, give us an update and some dates on our council staff retreat, and then also on the sound system for the council chambers. Are there any other additions? If there are none, then is there a motion to approve the agenda with those additions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with those additions.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that notion.
Okay, thank you. A motion has been made and suggested to approve the agenda as presented with those additions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Next, we have persons to be heard. Is there anybody signed up? We don't have anybody signed up, so we'll move on to special presentations. We have Foth Infrastructure and Environment LLC presentation on the MCES St. Boniface Interceptor project. Who would like to? Mr. Hornby.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. The Met Council Environmental Services and their consultant team, they're here to present some improvements they have to their interceptor system. And Tim O'Donnell with the Met Council is going to introduce his team.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for this opportunity to talk about an improvement project that we have planned for a lift station and regional sanitary sewer in this area. With me tonight, representing Metropolitan Council Environmental Services, is John Hemming. John is on our staff and he's our project manager. And our consultants from Foth Environment and Infrastructure are Chuck Jansky, the design engineer, Chuck is right here, and Karen Erickson is the project manager. Chuck will be doing the majority of the presentation tonight. Could you go to the next slide, please? Or do I hit that control? What we'd like to do tonight is just give you an overview of the project that we have planned for this area. So I'll talk briefly about Metropolitan Council Environmental Services, and then Chuck will get into a description of the existing system, show you on a map what our future service area would look like, and then talk about our objectives for this improvement project, talk about the alternatives that we looked at, and what our recommended project looks like, and then go over the project schedule and the cost and the funding. But just to give you a brief orientation of who we are, we're one of the two operating divisions of the Metropolitan Council. Metro Transit is by and large the more visible of these two operating divisions. We're kind of the invisible one because most of our facilities are underground or our treatment plants are in remote areas between cities. But I just wanted to give you a sense of the breadth of our system. We do serve the seven county metro area. We serve 107 communities. Actually, since this past summer, 108 communities with the addition of a very small wastewater reclamation plant in East Bethel. But you can see on the map, the red lines indicate the 600 miles of regional interceptor sewers or sanitary sewers that we operate. So our reach goes to Forest Lake up in the northeast, Wilconia out in the west, Elko New Market in southeastern Scott County, and then we go out as far east as the Stillwater, Fort Park Heights, Bayport area. So we really serve the regionalized or the urbanized portion of the seven county area. We operate seven wastewater treatment plants plus the water reclamation plant that opened last year. Excuse me. We treat about 250 million gallons of wastewater on a daily basis. That would be enough to fill the Empire State Building. We used to use an analogy of how quickly it would fill the Metrodome, but that's a big hole in the ground with a lot of steel being put up. So on the map are the red lines indicating our regional sewer system. The blue boxes are the wastewater treatment plants, basically on the Minnesota, Mississippi, and the St. Croix rivers. Those are the receiving waters for the treated wastewater that we discharge back into the environment to be used again. Just a little bit about our funding structure. We are funded entirely by user fees. Any business or property owner in the seven county area who is hooked up to a city sewer system would ultimately be hooked up to our system as well then. So about 60% of sewer bill that people would pay to their city would get turned over to the Met Council to run the regional system. About 40% of their bill would stay with the local community to finance the operation, maintenance, and construction of their local system. Excuse me. Because we rely solely on user fees, we do not have to rely on taxpayer dollars at all, no personal state tax dollars, property tax dollars. It's all user fee-based system. And because it's a regional system and it serves -- a sewer pipe that we propose to replace that runs along Highway 7 serves far more, a far larger area than just those properties that front where our sewer pipe goes. So we don't do special assessments on the property owners just because the pipe is in their vicinity. It serves a larger area, so all of our costs are borne by sewer users throughout the metro area. That provides us the funding that we need to operate, maintain, rehabilitate our system, and pay for our capital projects as well. So with that general overview, kind of who we are and what it is we do, I'll turn it over to Chuck to talk more briefly about the project that we have proposed for this area. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to preface this. I'm struggling with a cough here, so I'm doing water line and all the guys were for the coughs, but I'll do what we can. As Tim mentioned, the Metropolitan Council provides wastewater service to this area that we want with the rest of the Metropolitan area. And the system that serves the city of St. Boniface and portions of Minatrista was constructed in early 1970s, 1971 vintage. This map that shows on your folder, there's about 6,000 feet of gravity sewer that runs through St. Boniface from the west side to the east side to the lift station that's on the border with Minatrista. That's the station, L-24. And then from that lift station, it's a pressure, a single pressure pipe that runs all the way to the Bay Cliff area. That's a single 12-inch diameter force main. And the pump station is, has three large pumps, about 125 horsepower, and as I said, they're all, they're over 40 years old. Now, the pumps themselves have been replaced and repaired over time, so the pumps are not in as bad a condition as some of the other systems. But Met Council has looked at it as a priority to improve the infrastructure and advance of any drastic failures. So right now, we list in here, we've got lift station L-21 is the one that's on the border, near the capacity of the system. It doesn't meet current Metropolitan Council standards for safety and operation maintenance and access. The wet well where the wastewater comes before it's pumped out is undersized, and the concrete has deteriorated in many places from the salpy gas that's in the sewage and the wastewater. From the lift station then, the water is pumped into a force main. As I said, it's a single 12-inch diameter ductal line pipe force main, which in 1970s was a very good product, still is in most cases, but in cases like this where we have a very long force main, there's high points and low points that follow the concrete along the water. And at those high points, we get gases released from the wastewater. It corrodes the pipe and it's susceptible to corrosion and to breakage. We haven't had any catastrophic breaks other than, I think it was in '93, right down toward the end of the discharge point there where the little Congo 44 joins in. A section of pipe there corroded and broke and was replaced, so there is one portion of pipe that has been replaced. But right now, it's a single pipe, which is a concern for reliability because all of the wastewater from this whole area goes through that one pipe, and there aren't any alternatives. If the pipe breaks, it has to be repaired, and while it's being repaired, wastewater really backs up or it bypasses into the lake, or it's trucked around, which isn't a very good operation. So, looked at issues with the force main. It's 44 years old, ductal line here, near the end of the service life, inadequate capacity. The deterioration is the corrosion I was mentioning around air release at the high points. And a one-pipe system doesn't really, it doesn't provide any redundancy which is a backup system for failure. And it's the only source for wastewater service to this planning area. And then, at the end of that force main, it discharges into a gravity line again. That's a reinforced concrete pipe. Again, at the time, it was a good product, still is a good product in most cases, but in areas with a high degree of salpy generated in a long force main like this, we get that corrosion again and deterioration. A section of that also was rehabbed or repaired, I think it was in '93 as well, and this project will be looking at doing that for the rest of that pipe as well. The service area, we call, the title here is a little confusing. 7020 is Met Council's identifier for this force main, gravity and force main interceptor line. L-24 is the lift station. So 7020 is the sewer system, the main trunk line. The one that I mentioned is 6,000 feet gravity and then on the Bay Cliff. So this lift station serves the area of St. Boniface and approximately a half mile or so around St. Boniface on Minatrista, going through that system. Then there's a gap along Highway 7 where there's no sewer, no sewer service, and there isn't any intent to provide service to that area. This shaded area here is Woodland Cove. That area is served by 7020 also, real lift station, city lift station on Kings Point Road, and it comes down and it connects right up to the Roundabout there. That portion was replaced with the Kings Point Road Roundabout. And then, the service stops as it reaches the Three Rivers Park District. So that area doesn't have service. The, oh, what's the name of that?
Trillium.
Trillium. That served directly over to Congo 44, which is interceptor 7021. So it's a different interceptor system, but they join together down here on Highway 7. 7021 also conveys the wastewater from Alm, portion of Spring Park, Shoreview, Shorewood, and, and Minatrista, yes. You can refer to that also. So right now, the pipe, the force main runs right along Highway 7. It's, according to the old plans, it's about 35 feet on the center line, so it's just off the right of the, just off the paved area. And you can see there, there's, I know it all goes in that, so there's a lot of wetlands, a lot of water along there, some pretty nasty kind of things to run a pipe through. And that's part of the problem with the maintenance and the repair, because access can get to be a real issue. The only real maintenance on the force main itself is that, those air release valves at the high points. The gas is built up in there and it bursts the gas all over the pipe, so it corrodes the structure that does again. So we looked at a couple of, well, first of all, the objective of the project. The Met Council took a look at the age of the system, the reliability of the single pipe is a concern. So this particular project was given some priority to take a look at. With these basic objectives, first of all, to improve that system reliability, that single pipe is a danger or concern. And then reduce the O&M issues. As I mentioned, there's a lot of, there's access issues along Highway 7, and the structure of the lift station L-24 also is a concern as far as maintenance or access or maintenance. Then, in looking at the area, there will be some future growth, and the existing pipe there, a concern that that would not accommodate future growth. And also, another primary objective was to maintain environmental protection. The deteriorated pipe and location along these wetlands and the roadway, that's a real concern that pollution could be expelled into the environment of unwanted locations. So we looked at a couple of alternatives. Since the, if you remember the map, the service area is isolated from the rest of the Metropolitan system starts here at Bay Cliff, basically the rest of it. So this service area is isolated, there's this gap here. It really isn't a good alternative to get wastewater from Minatrista and St. Boniface to the Metropolitan system. We looked at or considered ideas to go up through Alm or that sort of thing, but it then all comes back to the same spot anyway. And we already have this, this system that's designed to run along Highway 7. So we looked at several alternatives, but came back with the routing that we have is about the best we can do as far as the footage, the length, the location, the access capabilities. And the lift station location is, it's hard to site a lift station. It's not one of those things you want in your backyard necessarily. This one's been there a long time. If you look at the cover of the presentation and the photo of the building, but it's been there a long time, and it, lift stations really are not that intrusive, but the connotation is not great. So it's been there for forty-some years. So what we looked at was trying to replace it on that stuff, adding to the building or directly adjacent to it. Then as far as the interceptor pipe, in order to get away from that single pipe, Met Council has, in many cases, run pipes side by side, five feet apart, so that one can be shut off, the flow can be directed to the other one while working on this one, that sort of thing. And in emergencies, you can use either one or both of the systems. So we looked at a new dual force main system along Highway 7 right of the, up to Woodland Cove area. At Woodland Cove, we had the opportunity to go, we're looking at the south side of Highway 7 all the way to the Roundabout, basically. At the Roundabout, and just east of the Roundabout, there's a portion of Big Woods, a remnant of the Big Woods that the Park District is very protected of, and you guys probably are well aware of that, the Roundabout issues. So at that point, or just before Woodland Cove, we would cross back under Highway 7 and then go on the north side of Highway 7. There's a, planned to be a trail along the south edge of Woodland Cove with some green space and that sort of thing. So there's some area that we can use for the force main routing, but we'll probably stay within the Highway 7 right of the way. We've met with MinDOT and Woodland Cove. If we can stay within the right of the way, we'll be at the Roundabout. Until we get to, here's the Woodland Cove. We're going on the south side of Highway 7, and we cross over, we follow Woodland Cove. At the edge of Woodland Cove, we come up to the Park District, and there's a large wetland here, there's green spots that are wetlands and protected areas that we want to avoid if at all possible. So we looked at a route up along the east edge of Woodland Cove, and then there's an existing easement for a sewer line through just the corner of the Park District up to Lotus Drive. And then, the plan would be to follow Woodland, I mean Lotus Drive, across Congo 44 into the park, and connect up to the 7021 or something. We looked at options to come all the way along Highway 7. That wetland and some of the other construction, there's some pretty steep cliffs in there, so we push the road, the pipe right near the road. We met with Three Rivers Park District representatives, and they went to their board, and came up with, they don't like any of the options particularly, but the Lotus Drive one is already an intrusion, which they agreed to. You know, they understand that there's a need for the wastewater service in the area. So they're supportive of the Lotus Drive route, and it seems like a good route for the pipe as well. Now, I am aware that there's a water project planned, and there's a well along Lotus Drive that crosses from Trillium, so there may be two water mains in that right, a roadway, raw water and a finished water. And then we'll want to put our two force mains in there. So we're talking four pipes in a fairly small roadway. We've done some projections on it, and it will fit fine as long as we all work together and get it done at one time would be the best.
It's not on the south side. Could I just ask a question?
Reserve some space in there right of the way for the force mains.
He's talking about Highway 7.
Chuck, maybe.
Chuck, hold on. Just, excuse me. Are you talking about the force, the pipeline on Highway 7?
No.
Okay. You're just talking about 44 and Lotus?
The one on 7 will be abandoned, and the new, this is the proposed new one now, it will go up on Lotus.
Okay.
So this will be a replacement for the one on 7.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's fine.
And, we're connecting to the 7021 interceptor here in the park, and then this portion of the 7021 would be slip line or line to rehab the gravity.
Oh, sure.
And again, portions of it have been repaired, but it is reinforced concrete, and we want to make sure that that's viable for the long term. So that's the proposed project. Is there any other questions? We just want to make you aware that in most cases, well, in all cases, it's on right of the way or easement. That one easement across Woodland, but the city street portion is at Lotus Drive. The rest of it is all state highway or county road. And we want to make sure when you're planning to work through Lotus Drive as well, consider that force main as part of the projects. And they can be done simultaneously, or, you know, as one after another, whichever, it doesn't make any difference. We've looked at this as a project schedule. Originally, we were planning to be working this year, I'm sorry, 2014, and then construction in '15. But there is some MinDOT work planned for Highway 5, which will divert traffic up to Highway 7, so it would be not a good idea to have construction adjacent to both highways at the same time. So we've pushed this construction back to 2016, so during 2015, we'll be working on the details of the design. At this point, it's pretty much just facility plan type details. We have had meetings with the city's staff and engineering representatives, and we've met with St. Boniface as well, and MinDOT regarding Highway 7, what their plans are for Highway 7. We mentioned Three Rivers Park District, and we've met with the developer at Woodland Cove and their engineer also, to see what their plans are on that south end of the subdivision. Probably aware of the schedule for Woodland Cove, they aren't going to be done on that south end for several years yet, but we need to know what their plans are to anticipate it for the cover over the force main, so we don't get it buried, or we can't get at it. And we've also had some discussions with the city's consultant on the water system, but I know that's somewhat on hold at the time. Anyway, for the time being, the plan is for 2015, you have to work on a more detailed design and start some of the land acquisition. We will probably require a little bit of land from that compost operation adjacent to the lift station. It's a pretty steep slope there, and just basically for protection for that slope. And then, developing easements across Woodland Cove subdivision. Toward the end of 2015, we anticipate completing the design, and early 2016, completing a land acquisition, with construction starting in 2016, and finishing up toward the end of 2017. There will be probably two or three phases to the project as the design develops. We mentioned that rehabilitation of 7021 that will probably occur first, so that's done before the new wastewater is directed that way. Also to meet some of the needs of the Three Rivers Park District to close down or not have any construction during the midsummer or busiest periods. So, Jim mentioned a little bit about this slide already. Met Council funds projects where there really isn't any city cost. This project is being funded partially from PFA loans to Met Council, but with that, there's a facility planning process, and so that was done and completed last year. The project, the one change on this slide, this last two lines, there it mentions average annual water use is 80,000 gallons. Met Council has found out that people are conserving water more nowadays, so that they're using 70,000 now at that value, which works out to about 192 gallons per person per day, which used to be about 220. And that drops the rate from $150 to about $146. But Met Council is seeing the reduction in water use throughout the Metropolitan area, and also I think there's been some improvements with this, and I've heard of improvements with that. So it tends to give us more life to new systems and designs as we go through the projects. So, that, I think, are done. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a few, and I'll start, and then we'll have the council. So just out of curiosity, what kind of water quality is it once it leaves your plant and goes back into the rivers, or goes into the rivers?
This, we're dealing with wastewater?
Right.
Sorry. Okay. The plant is Blue Lake.
Right.
This goes all the way down to Blue Lake.
Correct.
Blue Lake is tertiary, so it meets tertiary standards with the PCA. And generally, Met Council plants receive awards at most years for meeting their district As far as, you looking for specific numbers, like?
Yeah, I mean like PA.
If you OD, it would be around 15, I believe.
Okay.
If it comes in at over 200, 250, it discharges about 15, I think solid, TSS is about total solids, phosphorus, I'm going to say it's .5, but I can't for sure. That's district, so they have special requirements on Minnesota.
Right, they do.
I'm not working with their treatment end of it, so, but I know that the phosphorus limits are very tight, and they're meeting those.
And we've been moving towards a, about a one milligram per liter concentration of phosphorus in treated wastewater.
Okay.
So that's been improving at all of our plants over the years.
Okay.
The treated wastewater is not drinking water quality. It's not intended to reach that level. That would be quite expensive to do, plus it's also released to the environment, so it would need, if it's going to be used for drinking water by some other municipality, it would have to be treated all over again to meet drinking water standards. At all of our treatment plants, though, the treated wastewater is of higher quality than the river flowing by the plants, including in the St. Croix River, where we have one plant discharging at that location.
And then, how will this impact our residents? And then, how will this impact our residents?
The biggest impact would be the construction and the interference. The majority of the construction will be on the outer edge of the right of way, so there won't be very much disruption. There could be some, at least one lane closed on Highway 7 for periods of time. And I think, well, we were looking at probably, you know, a summer of construction of that pipeline. It's about 18,000 feet, so just over three miles.
So, how do you do that then? Because it's one pipe coming out. How do you not disrupt the flow of the sewer because obviously you can't stop it for any length of time quite, you know? So how do you, I mean, will it have to stop or how do you do that?
And the new pipe, actually, the existing pipe is on the north side of the right of way.
Okay.
So, in fact, when we're working on the south side, it makes it much easier because we can let that one run full time while we're working on the south side. Even when we're working near it, we maintain operation of the original pipe.
Okay.
In some cases, there has to be some bypassing, which, bypassing through the downstreet manhole, not bypassing through the wiring. So it's pumped out of one manhole down the road and into the, the downstreet manhole.
Okay.
That would probably be the case in the section over on the east side of County Road 44. When we do the rehabilitation of the existing pipe, we will need to take the wastewater out of that pipe, run it through temporary conveyance pipes around the area that we're working on, discharge it to the downstream manhole.
And so people.
That's very commonplace for all of our rehabilitation projects throughout the metro area.
Okay, and so there's no disruption to the residents in terms of usage?
No.
Okay. And then, when you go down Lotus Drive, what is the plan and how will that affect that road?
That, it, in most respects, it has to be determined because we don't know the design of the road yet. In discussions with Three Rivers Park District, they were concerned when they negotiated agreements that this was not going to be a major thoroughfare. It's going to be a, they call it a parkway. Now, I don't know what exactly they're thinking of as a parkway. But to put all these pipes in road, we'll probably close it all, if we want to close it all, for a portion of time. We're talking two water mains and two forest mains, separated by at least 10 feet. So the two pipes on each side are 10 feet in the middle. So we're talking a trench, it would be an individual trench, so it would be one entire trench, but it's going to cover the entire roadway to, compared to those trenches.
So you're planning on putting these pipes underneath the roadway?
Yes.
Okay, so, maybe staff could tell me then who pays to put, maybe you can tell me, who pays to put the roadway back in?
The roadway is part of the project.
Okay.
There again, there's some things that are up in the air, discussions with the staff and the developer at Woodland Cove. I understand Woodland Cove has committed to construct the roadway.
Correct.
But Met council, if Met council digs up the road, they technically replace the road.
Okay.
So whichever way it goes, it, it won't be the residents. It'll either be Met council or the developer.
Okay, and then the other question, you were saying that Lotus Drive would be closed, however, unless, you know, are you, you will have to provide access for people that live on Bay Shore Drive because they will have to get in and out. And that is their primary road to get in and out, so I'm assuming you'll be looking at that?
Yes, the, the detail design is not bad, but there, there has to be access for residents.
Okay, and of course, emergency vehicles as well, um, okay.
If I may, Madam Mayor, too, by, by the time, given the proposed timeline, South Bay Drive residents will have access via the Woodland Cove development Phase 2. They'll have a connection to Kings Point Road. So, as, as has been mentioned, we've been meeting with them, talking about timelines. And in terms of Lotus Drive, keep in mind too, from a city cost standpoint, we're, depending upon water treatment, you know, we'll have to put lines in at the same time, so that's kind of another moving target with schedule on all of this. The good news is, is we have control. The developer is on the hook for reconstructing Lotus Drive. We, we postponed that for a couple of reasons to the next phase, Phase 3, and this being one of those reasons, knowing that this project was coming down the pipeline. So, we're, we're in a good position from a city standpoint, given that we're in the driver's seat of Lotus Drive and have been working with Three Rivers Park District on, on these improvements. So, again, a moving target, but, but one that certainly we, we can have some control over.
And then, as you're going down Highway 7, you're saying on the south side of 7, how much property acquisition are you going to have to make in Minatrista?
Along Highway 7, we don't anticipate any acquisition, just at the list station site itself.
Okay.
And possibly some area temporary for jack in underneath the highway.
Okay.
The highway would have to be closed.
Okay, you're going to directional bore or whatever, you think?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Other questions?
Will Highway 5 be completed by the time you start this?
I believe it will.
John is a project engineer. I took John on Highway 5, so.
That's the intention. Minnott's project on Highway 5 is, this construction season, we're also putting in a new forest main as, as part of that one. So we're, we're not, we're not planning on going out of the tail by this down, the 7 is back. And we know the type of traffic disruption causes from constructing the highway here.
Okay. Another, oh, go ahead.
I, I, you've answered the question, I'm pretty sure. Because that's been a big concern. I live right on 7, just west of roundabout. The neighbors have asked a lot about right of way. They didn't know if it was going to be at North Side. So you are planning on staying in the existing 150-foot right of way, what exists on 7, so, okay.
Well, and then another question I have is, you made this sound pretty urgent, and so that kind of concerns me. And we certainly don't want to end up with a situation similar to what Mound had earlier, as you know. So tell me, are we going to be okay until 2017?
There's, there's no guarantees, obviously. The system's been operating on that. Met council maintains it and checks it regularly. So every expectation is, it won't fail until, and if, if there are isolated failures, they're after repair.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Are you looking for anything from us this evening? This is just informational, I understand?
At this point, it's just information to let you know what's going on.
Okay.
And remember that Lotus Drive.
Yes, okay.
Mayor, perhaps one item. The team is already doing some survey work along Highway 7 for this project, so, and they have sent out notices to our residents. You may have seen those. We did run the notices and so forth out to staff and back out to both, to send out on behalf of the Met council.
Okay.
And so that's been done. And we've also met with them to talk about any possibility of the water lines and maybe even doing a cooperative project if we end up running some water lines in Lotus Drive, so.
Okay, yep, I was thinking that.
Pam had asked about Highway 5 and the connection of the roadwork being done on there and 7, if they're going to be done at the same time. What area are you talking about on Highway 5? What section from Waconia or what, what area are you talking about?
From, from.
From where to where?
To Victoria, where the, the roadway isn't, isn't life, it hasn't been done.
So you're looking at from the west, starting west of Victoria to Waconia, is that what you're looking at?
The east side of Waconia.
East side of Waconia to the west side of Victoria? Okay, I was just curious what area you're talking about.
Yeah, Waconia, I think, has another project on Highway 5 west of that lake. I don't know much about that.
Okay.
But the stretch this coming season is about 3,000 miles.
Again, starting west of Victoria?
Correct, on the west, west edge of Victoria to the east edge of Waconia.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much then. And staff, any questions? I, I know you've been talking with them, so, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those are the only special presentations that we have this evening. Next, we have our consent agenda items consisting of approval of our regular meetings, meeting minutes from December 1st, approval of our special meeting minutes from January 5th, approval of our regular meeting minutes from January 5th, and then an up, a resolution to update signatories on our finance accounts. Any questions, removals? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, and D as presented.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as A, B, C, and D is shown.
Second.
Okay, all those, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Next, we don't have any public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to our business items. We have a resolution supporting the Baker-Carver Regional Trail for Three Rivers Park District. I believe that's Mr. Abel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Three Rivers Park District staff's also in the audience, and at one point in my presentation, I'll kick over to them to talk more about the actual master plan. But to start out with, I, I wanted to give some history and context as to how long of a process it has been for the city to get where, to where we are. And note that there's been, you know, many different citizen involvement opportunities and different planning commissions, city councils, park commissions that have worked on this. This goes back 17 years, actually, when, when you take a look at the history and how we got to where we are, looking at this actual north-south regional trail corridor. And that really started back with the comprehensive plan update in 1998. The citizens of the community at that time stressed that it was important for the city to protect the, the natural resources. And they also wanted to develop a trail plan that had, was, those were high priorities that were called out at the time by the citizens. And specifically what, what was called out is connectivity of the regional assets that the city had at its time. Recognizing that, later, the city council funded what was called the Minnesota Land Cover Classification Survey. They did that over the entire city. And what that did was identify priority, high priority areas of the city to protect as the city were, was to grow in the future. And then also look for trail connectivity opportunities, again, when the city grows with, with, via development. And the idea is to, to put a plan in place similar to our comprehensive plan that would help guide the leaders of the city as the city is growing. The city then turned that into a grant opportunity and looked at a Greenways grant from the Minnesota DNR and dove down into more specific areas in developing a map to help protect the open space of the city. And then again, use that trail connectivity aspect as part of this process. They did form a citizen advisory committee to make a recommendation to the city council on future trails in Greenway. And then the committee began meeting in December of 2002 and held over 15 meetings with the public to help develop this plan that I'm, I'm going to, what, the plan that was developed was the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan. So this is the process leading up to that. And what, what they did is come up with a conceptual trail recommendation for the council. This was October of 2003. They held a public hearing and then hired a consultant at the time to facilitate a planning process for the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan. Again, the, the keys were connecting our, our inventory, our existing inventory with our regional connections, develop a Parks Trails and Open Space Plans that'll set priorities and, and make recommendations to implement these strategies in, in the future. They did hold public open houses. There were displays at City Hall and they, kind of, cat-tailing on what we were talking about earlier with communication. This is the way they communicated the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan back in the 2002 and 2003 timeframe. They then in 2004, throughout all of this process, is when the city finally adopted its Parks Trails and Open Space Plan. And the next slide I'm going to show you is that conceptual document that started in 98, was ultimately approved in, in 2004. And what I want to point out on this map is, is the main thing being that even back then, we had several north-south trail corridors proposed for the city of Minatrista, including, as you can see down here, Kings Point Road up to Farm Hill and then connecting up here to, to County Road 110. You can even see a, a potential alignment here through Gail Woods. Here, there's a couple of different options going through Mound or going over to County Road 92 where, again, County Road 92 being another potential option for a north-south corridor. So what, what do you see that's similar to what we're looking at tonight is specifically down here to the south, Kings Point Road up Farm Hill connecting up to Gail Woods. That, of course, is the route that is outlined as part of Three Rivers Park District Master Plan and one, again, that dates back to 2004. So to bring that into more recent context, how did we get to where we are now? And really, a combination of a couple of things, but the biggest being Woodland Cove is what sparked this conversation again. In 2010, developers started working with the city on coming up with a master plan for the site. City staff, in talking with Three Rivers Park District, recognized that knowing there's a north-south connection, a desire for a north-south connection, the Woodland Cove development would be a key opportunity to secure a large section of that southern portion. You have connection from Lake Minnetonka Regional Park to Carver Park Reserve and then all the way up as far on Kings Point Road to Six Mile in terms of the connection. So we looked at that opportunity to seize that through the park dedication requirements when Woodland Cove was going through. So in March of 2011, the city approves a work plan to amend our Parks Trails and Open Space Plan and include that master trail, north connection from Carver Park to Dakota Rail and, and Looseline Trail. And I guess one, one thing I, I just want to point out, you know, in 2004, when the city adopted the map, you know, Dakota Rail was not constructed yet. So when I say things have, have changed, you have, you know, the Dakota Rail Trail is now there, which also will provide a key connecting point. Gail Woods was there, but another recent acquisition up here being Camp Kingswood from Three Rivers Park District. So some of the pieces of the puzzle, if you will, have came together. But, you know, it's taken 17-plus years to get to this point and certainly is a work in progress. And, and this is something that we're looking at out into the future, so keep that in mind as we're, we're looking at this and going through it. So to review what, what has been done here as of recent in terms of our amendment and our Parks Trails and Open Space Plan, city had held two meetings with the public, with key, with property owners within that trail corridor. The first meeting, our, the primary concern that was raised that it was that land purchases would be on a willing seller basis. It was very much stated at the meeting by our residents that they did not want the use of condemnation or eminent domain for the, the future acquisition of this trail. Willing seller was the main point of discussion. And then the second meeting that was held, the discussion really was centered around the routes. There were four different options that were presented. The next slide will show that map, but options 3 and 4 ultimately did not end up being the preferred routes. Environmental concerns, costs, the, the non-directness of it were all factored as being concerns. And then ultimately was option 1 and 2 that, that I'll show you on the map here in a second, along Farm Hill that was selected. And certainly though, it was stated at that, throughout that process, that residents on Farm Hill were not, were not in favor of that given that it would change the feel of the neighborhood that, that they had felt. And their concern was that the city looked for a different route. They had some environmental concerns and then cost was a concern as well. But ultimately, again, options 1 and 2, on the next slide, I'll show you the, the routes. The, the goal on all of this was, again, high-quality trail experience and connects regional trails and parks. We, of course, at the time, and still understand that, you know, planning these regional trails is a sensitive issue. There is impact on neighbors. We, we find that, not only with the regional trail, but the water treatment discussion. Mostly Farm Hill resident, Farm Hill Drive and Circle residents were not excited about the trail alignment. But there seemed to be general acceptance of the plan if that willing seller approach was made as a policy of the city council in Three Rivers Park District. So we, in our plan, in our Parks Trails and Open Space Plan, did emphasize that it'd be a willing seller approach is, is what we as the city would take. Three Rivers Park District can speak a little bit more about, about their policy. It's, it's my understanding that their, their policy is that they do not use eminent domain or condemnation. It's willing seller. But again, I'll, I'll let them talk more specifically about that. Here's the map I was referring to. This is directly. This is directly out of our Parks Trails and Open Space Plan. This being, the yellow line being option one. Option two, option one and two were the most desirable routes. Then three and four, as I mentioned, being eliminated. Three, as you can see, a lot of land acquisition and then a lot of environmental impacts. And then seven, the option four being along Highway seven was also a route that was eliminated through our evaluation criteria and planning process due to its non-directness and cost. So, again, it's that option one, the yellow line, that was adopted into our plan, and then you can see then the potential opportunities of it going through Woodland Cove, and actually now Three Rivers with obtaining the Von Blom piece of property, there's another opportunity for connecting down, again, to the pedestrian tunnel under Highway seven. So, that is a very quick, brief update on how we got to where we are, and I just wanted to, everyone to understand that, you know, this has been something that was a work in progress going back seventeen years now. It's not something that just, you know, because Woodland Cove came in, it just popped up here recently. It's always been a focus and desire of the city to do this. We had a Parks Commission meeting last week, and there are several Parks Commissioners who were here on the Parks Commission and part of this process, and remembered that. They remembered going through that and sitting through the public meeting. So, it certainly has been a work in progress. And more recently, I just wanted to note the amount of time and work that has been put in since two thousand and ten through Park Commission staff and city council. Parks Commission had talked about this recent amendment at eleven different meetings since two thousand and ten. City council discussed it at thirteen different meetings since two thousand and ten. Very much had public comment and input throughout all of those processes, so it's been a lot of work to get to this point. And ultimately, in May of two thousand and twelve is when the city council did amend our Parks Trails and Open Space Plan that included that regional north-south connection. And what then, Three Rivers Park District did is assume control of that master plan, so they took our plan in Minatrista, our route that we approved, and they took it to another step. They had a draft master plan out for public comment in November of two thousand and fourteen, and with that, I'll turn it over now to Anne Rixine with Three Rivers Park District. This is the, the master plan that I'll let her talk a little bit more about.
Good, Stephen. Madam Mayor and members of the council, thanks for inviting the Park District to talk to you tonight about the Baker-Carver Regional Trail Master Plan. As David did allude, in two thousand and twelve, the Park District assumed the planning responsibilities of this trail from the city of Minatrista. At that point, we took Minatrista's work that they have done thus far and incorporated it into the plan that you see tonight, but we also took it a step further and didn't end the trail at the borders of Minatrista, because from a regional implementing agency, we really try and connect those larger regional facilities. So, as you can see on the map, we extended the trail out to Maple Plain and ultimately Baker Park Reserve through Independence. And then we also extended the trail through Carver Park Reserve, which is at the southern end, to Victoria. So, the ultimate trail is seventeen miles long. Its ultimate implementation is many, many years in the future. There's portions that are complete. The Dakota Rail segment, which is Segment E, is already complete, and the Segment B, which is the Looseline State Trail, is complete. But again, seventeen miles, it offers a nice looping opportunities for people who are looking to have longer bike rides. Ultimately, when the trail is completed, we expect about a hundred and eighty-three thousand visits, which, in comparison to Dakota, is not as much, but it will receive a lot of ridership. Dakota, I believe, is about, correct me if I'm wrong, about three hundred thousand still. We're reaching four or five hundred thousand. So, again, we're connecting lots of regional amenities, as David alluded to, starting at the north, we're connecting Carver Park Reserve through the downtown of Maple Plain. They're very excited about it. Part of our outreach since two thousand and twelve has been reaching out to the residents of Maple Plain and Independence to determine what the route should be through their community and if they wanted it, and they both agreed that they did want it, and they both agreed on a, on a route. We're connecting to the Looseline State Trail, another amenity, down Gate Farm Road to Kingswood Park, which David talked to, is another recent acquisition of the Park District. Down to Gail Woods Farm, Dakota Rail, down Farm Hill, to the Woodland Cove development, and then to Carver Park Reserve. So, we're intending this to be a significant north-south connection for Western Hennepin County. David, if you wanted to flip to the next slide. We just wanted to reiterate that no willing seller, no trail. We hear it from the city of Minatrista loud and proud. No willing seller, no trail. We understand that. We're committed to that. The Park District agrees to it, and that language is, resonates with us, and we agree to that. So, we want to make sure that, that we are all on the same page with that. Also, we've heard from significant members of Minatrista about your equestrian use within the city, and we do hear that, so the comment is acknowledged. And we'd like to extend that when the trail is slated for construction, that if those users are still there, and if they still are interested in seeing some type of a dual-purpose trail, that we would really sit down with the city at that time and discuss some alternatives that may exist to keep those users in the same, within the same space but separate. So, again, that, we would like to add that to the master plan as an amendment to the existing language that we do have right now. Again, the public comment period ended. We, we received some significant public support, not only from the city of Minatrista, but the region itself. They're excited about the trail. They're excited about the opportunity to come visit Minatrista and, and see the beautiful, beautiful lay of the land that you do have. So, willing seller approach and, and that equestrian use, we wanted to really hit home with you folks tonight. And with that, I'd like to entertain any questions that you may have. I also have Kelly Christman here from the Park District. If I'm not able to answer any questions, I'd like to invite her to the podium as well.
Questions? Ms. Thor?
Yes. Regarding Segment F, the area through Farm Hill, which it, it appears from the packet of materials that that's really kind of the only area that there's been a challenge as far as some pushback or receptivity to the trail going through there. How, where is that at? Or you said, no, you know, no willing seller, no, no deal. What if three residents in that area say, no, we don't want the trail going through here? What happens? Does the trail just come up to that point and then start over again on the other side of Farm Hill?
You know, as the Park District plans for the trail, you know, part of the, part of the process is land acquisition, and we wouldn't put significant capital into this project until we had a continuous trail through a portion. So, we'd need to see significant land acquisition happen in a sequence before we would consider building the trail through that portion.
One of, maybe, in, kind of on that same vein, you could, and part of their concern, from what I've read and heard, is that a trail, an off-road trail, as you will, won't really fit in with their neighborhood and community. And so, could the city request that that segment be an on-road trail? And that area, I don't know if you've been there or not, but when it's a, you know, dead-end road and very few homes there, so very, very little traffic, it seems to me it would make the most sense in that segment to do an on-road trail, and that may alleviate a lot of the opposition that the neighborhood has. It would still keep the neighborhood looking the same, if you will, and it wouldn't impact the residents, and I think that's their concern. You know, so those might be things that we could consider as we move forward with this. I was on the council at the time when we did this in two thousand and four. In fact, I was part of the, the committee, sat on the committee with this plan, and our concerns were, one, impacts to residents, and of course, as you stated, we said, we, no willing seller, we won't do it. So, that's always, at least since that time, has been the city's philosophy, and so moving forward with that, any questions?
I think the one, one, at least for you, is the section of Gate Farm Road that right now it's a city trail, would that be turned over to Three Rivers Park District, and they would be, own it, maintain it?
Are you talking about the on-street portion?
Yeah.
Of the equestrian?
Yes.
Portion? You know, Madam Mayor and members of the council, no preliminary design has taken place as of yet. We're not sure which side of the road it's gonna go on, on Gate Farm Road. We've just done some, some preliminary engineering estimates at this point. Again, if there's a dual purpose to that trail, we would go ahead and sit down with the city and determine, you know, the operations and maintenance, if we would like that dual trail to exist into the future, you know, we would have that conversation at a later date. David, would you like to?
And just to add, add to that, you know, the, the second item on your agenda is, is our cooperative agreement, and unfortunately, we're already past this, but if we were to go back to when Gate Farm Road was reconstructed, and we had that, this master plan in place and that cooperative agreement, we would have worked with Three Rivers on incorporating the regional trail corridor along Gate Farm Road. So, that, fortunately, we recently did that and didn't have that in place, but the good news is, is now here on out, moving forward, when we have opportunities like that, we would have, we would have worked with them to figure out, how can we do a road reconstruction project, peace the equestrian community, and then also incorporate the regional trail aspect as part of it. So, you know, once you get to the more finite detail up in that area, that, that could be, you know, an option or, and/or, you know, incorporating it on one side, equestrian, one side, you know, the other, and, and go from there. But that's really now from moving forward with this cooperative agreement, that's what the city's going to now look to within this corridor.
And my second question, I think I'm gonna wait. It has more of a question for staff and our attorney, just looking through the agreement as far as property rights, right-of-way acquisitions and stuff like that. I'd like to go through that, but can we wait till, till the end?
You know, you said a hundred and eighty-three thousand trips per day or, or per year, I'm sorry. Do you have that for specific segments, or is that for the entire length of the trail? I'm assuming some segments might see more than others.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, that's for the entire trail when, the entire trail is completed. So, all seventeen miles are completed, then that a hundred and eighty-three thousand estimate is two thousand and fourteen estimate. Certainly, there are segments that will receive more use than others. I would assume areas by the Dakota, by significant regional assets would receive higher use numbers. You know, folks that are looking for those looping opportunities would travel the whole trail, but we do see a significant amount of users who are jumping on the trail and jumping back off the trail. So, that a hundred and eighty-three thousand number is annual usage.
And the entire trail?
And the entire trail.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. David, I think you're looking for something?
The only thing, yeah, I wanted to add, I mentioned the Parks Commission did discuss this at their meeting last week. They did recommend that the city council approve a resolution that would support the master, regional master trail plan from Baker Park down to Carver Park Reserve. So, that was their, their recommendation at their meeting, was a unanimous vote. So, there is, there is a resolution as part of your packet this evening. We'd be looking to give support to the Three Rivers Park District for their regional master trail plan. That then allows them to take it to the next step, to the Metropolitan Council, to incorporate it into the overall regional plan.
So, you're looking for a resolution of support for the Baker-Carver Regional Trail?
Correct.
Okay. Which is on page twenty-two, I believe, of our packets? And this is kind of, again, maybe you could, this has already been approved.
Correct. It is somewhat of a unique situation, whereas we, we, the city, already changed this in our own plan and amended our Parks Trails and Open Space Plan. So, we've already approved it in our city. Really, what, what we're doing is now, as Three Rivers Park District took it, they went beyond our city, beyond Loosline and beyond Carver Park Reserve, all the way down to Victoria up to Baker. So, this is giving the city support to that overall regional connection, connectivity is what the support would be giving.
And then, in your, you could answer this. When a segment is going to be constructed, how much, say, does the city have in that? I mean, can we, does Three Rivers work the city to make sure that the impacts are minimized, to make sure that landscaping is done, things like that?
Certainly, that's a great question. Madam Mayor, remember this in council, we would work intimately with the city. This is not a project that happens in a vacuum. We would work with the city staff, members of the council, landowners, whatever it takes to get a terrific project and a terrific trail out in Minatrista is what we strive for. So, this is not the last time that you see the Three Rivers Park District present this trail in front of you. There'll be significant opportunities for additional input as construction occurs.
And then, this is like a fifteen, twenty-year plan. I mean, some of these on, in your plan said, you know, ten-plus years, or fifteen-plus, or twenty-plus years, so you are thinking, this isn't gonna happen tomorrow or next year, whatever. We're, we're talking many years from now, actually. The only other question I have is, in the resolution, it does say, whereas, the Baker-Carver Regional Trail will provide safe, off-street, non-motorized access, and I just want to reiterate that there are some areas of Minatrista that may need to be on-street. Again, like I said, the Farm Hill area particularly. So, is there, maybe that wording should say, safe, non-motorized access, or off-street? If, if everything, if we're saying everything has to be off-street, that's not exactly, I think, what we're promoting. So, I would say, safe, non-motorized access to existing regional and state recreation amenities?
Certainly, Madam Mayor and members of the council, the Park District is open to that type of discussion. We're always looking for creative solutions and creative design ideas for sticking points, and so we'd be open to making accommodations to our typical regional trail where those situations would arise.
Okay.
And so, I think your language would be acceptable.
Okay, all right. Do you all agree?
I agree.
Okay.
I'm a little concerned what you're saying about Farm Hill, 'cause I've talked to a lot of residents out there, and they just don't want it. They don't care if it's off-street or on-street. I do have some concerns about putting a trail on a street. I mean, Farm Hill already is quite narrow, if you, you know.
Well, the only reason I was saying, and especially Farm Hill, because the residents are concerned, one of their concerns, just one of their concerns, is that off-road trail is not in keeping with their neighborhood, and I would agree. It would seem a bit odd. And it is a dead end, and if you go out there, which I've, I've been out there, you go out there and you count the number of homes out there, there's very few. And because it's a dead-end road, when you come up from the marsh area and then go on the road, it would be very safe as an off, as an on-road trail, and what it is, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but what they do is they stripe it, and there's a width, and maybe this lady here could tell you what an on-road trail might be, because it's, they are safe.
Right, I mean, it's, you're basically extending the shoulder out.
Yes.
Right, and that, and, and I think, and that's where it kind of gets a little fuzzy. You say, tell some people on-road trail, they're gonna look at it as it's on the road. What, what we're talking about is the extension of the shoulder, basically what we have along Gate Farm Road.
Yeah, and that's, that's what's called an on-road, but maybe this lady could explain it.
That's why we want to make people understand that, because not everybody knows that. When you say an on-road, most people are gonna think, well, they're gonna put people on the road.
No, no.
Right, that's what I, that's why I brought this up, to make sure that we're clear.
Right.
Madam Mayor, fellow councilmembers, I think you guys are having a great conversation. It's very detailed, and we are way, way up in the planning right now, and before we get into the nitty-gritty detail, which is really- And before we get into the nitty-gritty detail, which is really years away, I think we're hearing your message, Gate Farm Road still needs more work. The route itself makes the most sense of all the route studied. But when it comes to design and it comes to land acquisition, it's going to be very collaborative with the city. And we're going to have to work through those details at this time. We're not, we haven't done enough engineering, we haven't sat down with the neighborhood and the individuals to any capacity to say, it makes sense to do a bike lane or share the road condition or an off-street trail. And absolutely land acquisition is a concern, and absolutely there's, there's no willing sellers, you don't have a trail. But I can tell you in our history that people eventually come around. Their situation changes, that they need the cash, or they're ready to move on, or they're going to develop their property, and now the city has regulatory control in that they can seek park dedication. So we're not planning for today. We're not even really planning for tomorrow. We're planning for like tomorrow's tomorrow with how long this is going to take to acquire 17 miles of regional trail corridors. So we're hearing your message, we're totally on board with all of your concerns. I'm not trying to disregard them, but we're way up here, so, so, thank you.
Yeah.
And I think just, just to that point.
That's a good point made, thank you.
Just to that point, kind of why I wanted to lay out the history. 17 years to, to get where we are, and I guess if we're going to use the sports analogy, I don't even think we're to halftime. And that took 17 years. So this is a long, long-range plan that is going to take time. And certainly, as we've, I've talked about this for the past seven years and worked on this, I've already in that time seen this community change, you know. So who knows 20, 30 years from now, what, with Woodland Cove and, and other areas, what the city would look like and, and what, what it'll be. So that, that too was part of my goal in explaining the history and how long it took to get here and where, where we have to go yet.
And my point for this resolution, Mr. Vanderlinde, just to make it clear, I just want to give the city the option, and that's all I was saying, is let's eliminate where it says off-street. It is off-street or off-road, but it's not going to be in the, in the road. But just to give everybody options, and I think it just makes it a little clearer that it can be any option that we or the Park District work together on, so. That's, and you're right, thank you. This is, you're way up there and we're already talking details, so. All right. Well, this was previously approved, so basically we're looking at reapproval because of the new segments that have been added. So I'm looking for a reso, any further questions, discussion? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution of support for the Baker-Carver Regional Trail with the exception of removing in paragraph two, off-street.
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded to approve the resolution in support of the Baker-Carver Regional Trail, removing the off-street language. All those, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, and thank you for your time, ladies.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, then, we have, let me make sure, approving a regional trail cooperative agreement with Three Rivers Park District?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I already kind of alluded to this agenda item in our earlier conversation. This, this really now, what this agreement does is set forth the framework for future property rights, design, construction, operation, and then maintenance of that regional trail. I used the specific example of Game Farm Road earlier. So that, that, that really is, is one of the areas where we then now, as a city, when we move forward with road reconstruction projects, we would look to incorporate the regional trail aspect as part of that. Other opportunities would be development, like we did with Woodland Cove. We didn't have the agreement in place, but certainly we were thinking towards the future when Woodland Cove was approved from park dedication standpoint. So we, we as a city have more of a pulse on what is going on in our community, and we'll see these, whether it's willing seller or project-based opportunities come to light before Three Rivers Park District does. So this is a way to put, put that framework in place in terms of an agreement as the city moves forward with this whole regional trail concept. So I, I know one council member alluded to a question, some of that earlier. With that, I'll just go ahead and turn it over to the city council for discussion. Ultimately, though, what we would be looking for from council, there is a resolution for the agreement, and then the actual agreement itself is located in your packet that we're looking for adoption this evening.
Questions? So David, could you just explain briefly, what is the difference between what we just, the resolution we just passed, which was, I'm sorry, supporting the plan, and now this cooperative agreement? Why are there two documents?
The, the master plan itself is, is just that, it's, it's the plan. It's the high-level detail in terms of where the, the corridor and route would be. So that's, that's the plan itself that is more looked at from a regional standpoint. And it goes to the Metropolitan Council to be put in as part of the regional plan. This document gets down to some more detail. We're still at high level, although, we're still at high level detail here. But thi, this gets more into the framework between us, the city, and Three Rivers Park District for future opportunities, again, as they arise in the future. So whether that's project-based or development-based, this sets the framework for the city and the Park District to work together. And as we were talking about earlier, more of that, that low-level detail then will be discussed when we get to certain segments, when opportunities present themselves. So, you know, what side of the road, on-street, off-street? Those types of details is, is when then the city and the Park District can work out those details, either as part of that road reconstruction project, as part of that subdivision. We can look at doing that as part of the subdivision. That's when we'll get more into that low-level detail as to what it's going to look like and how big it's going to be, how, how much right-of-way you're looking for.
Okay, all right. Questions?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mr. Vanderlinde.
I didn't know if.
Nope, I don't have any questions.
Okay. I brought it up before, I guess, reading through the proposal or the agreement, when you get into the property rights and they're talking about different land acquisition, and where was it about the obligation of the city to fulfill?
Right.
As our attorneys look through this thing, I'm wondering if, is there financial obligations for the city for this thing? You know, I think we'd kind of like to know that before we, we get into it, and what they're talking about through this whole, this whole contract as far as right-of-way acquisitions and obligations to the ci, that the city have.
Who would be the best one? I, I understand what you're saying, I think I had the same questions. I think it states in here that we will acquire the land and, and, and then be reimbursed. Is that the one you're talking about? And then, once we're reimbursed, then there's, city has to bear certain costs and so on. But we're not obligated to do that. If we don't have the money, we don't have the money. I mean, do you know what, what I'm referring to? I think it was in their, in their Park District plan. I'm not sure if it was in the packet or not, but it referred to the city acquiring property and then being reimbursed by the park and.
Right. Right, if you go to page 30, it says, part of it says, "The city may fulfill their responsibilities through public trails and easements." So what's the city's, what do they talk about, the city responsibility?
Well, again, it's, it's when those opportunities present themselves. If it's, if it's development and it's within the corridor, we're going to, we're going to either look to take easements or via our park dedication requirements, take trail corridors for that. So that's what, what it's outlining there. With, with right-of-way, again, it's, it's when, when opportunities are presenting themselves with reconstruction projects. Annie alluded to earlier that they're not, Three Rivers Park District is not going to put any capital money into segments or areas unless defined whole corridors are put in place. They don't want dead ends or trails to nowhere. So that, that, there hence being why this could take a long time to get there. So if there aren't, if there are no development in this corridor, or there are no road projects in the corridor, nothing's going to happen, unless you have willing sellers coming forward to, whether it's us, the city, where we would then work with Three Rivers on coordinating that effort. But that's really what it's outlining, is when those opportunities present themselves. And, and they, as was mentioned, don't want, just, they're not going to take short, small little segments from us until you have, as they're labeled as different letters in, in the segment, Segment F, until all of Segment F is, is acquired and ready to go. Then they'd look to get more definitive with engineering and, and design of that.
But we're not going to be responsible for going and getting the right-aways, unless it comes up, like you say, within a reconstruction. I mean, the cooperation is what, what you're looking for, right?
Madam Mayor and Madam Mayor, you as a city have a lot of regulatory controls that we need to manage. So if a developer comes in and they want to develop a piece of parcel, you guys, as Gabe and Alude, you have park dedication, you could do developers' agreement. We are not in a good place that we can do that. We can certainly work with a developer, but they're not obligated to work with us. They are obligated to work with you. We also, you know, it sounds like you read the agreement, and I'm glad that you did, and I'm glad you have questions. We also are already out there acquiring land in front of the council. I think in November, December was a resolution to kind of figure out the Six Mile Creek Marsh area and how we might do that. We have at least one willing seller in that area that's been waiting very patiently for several years to come to and purchase and commit to. We are working on an appraisal on that property, hopefully something will come to fruition near, in the near future. We've bought another property that was under, under foreclosure. We bought Kingswood, kind of all like piecing these together. So we also are an active partner in trying to see how this happens. But we are, as opportunities present themselves, and so we wouldn't expect the city to do anything different than that.
So basically, it's just saying to work cooperatively with you. If we see an opportunity arise, that we would maybe take advantage of it or let you know of, of the opportunity?
Absolutely. If you're doing a road reconstruction project, that's really our opportunity to work together. We do not want to come in three years later, move your curb, move your storm sewer and all your water and all of that. That's super expensive and it, it makes way more sense to design and implement that all at the same time.
And, and then also, I think what you're alluding to, if I, if I can, when, once we've acquired some, a segment of a trail, and what you're saying, because it, it's going to be your trail, you would want us to, the city would then give you, if you will, the property rights or the easement rights to that, okay? Is that what, what, what you're saying, yeah?
So the way the agreement is structured right now is where the city already has rights to the land, you would give those in some capacity an easement or permit to the Park District. So if we look at Woodling Cove, you guys have done a great job with the developers' agreement, and you're going to have a trail corridor that goes through that. When that comes on hand and the city actually owns those outlots, that would be the time you could provide us with that easement. Can you please step in if, if speaking?
And that's actually to our benefit, because then we get a trail through this development and we don't have to maintain it.
Or pay for it, or?
So, I think that's, um.
If you are actively going and buying land on behalf of the Park District, let's say you're doing a road reconstruction, and to make it all work, you need to buy a five or 10-foot easement. If you are expending city resources, we will reimburse you for those resources.
Okay.
We do not expect the city to use its own capital resources to pay for regional amenities.
Okay, that's, was my concern, that I don't think we should, yeah, okay, all right.
And I guess that does lead into a question that we've talked about before. And a big portion of it, or what I'm talking about, is the section through Six Mile Marsh, is we've talked about using that as a possible waterline route. I take, we've, we've talked about that and hopefully we'd come to an agreement to be able to, so both of us can use that.
Yeah, and the appraisal, what had been done, and it's the God property, I'm not sure if you're familiar. We are structuring it so we will have a value to what the trail and the storm, or the, excuse me, the water treatment easement would be, so that we can work together on acquiring that.
Will we have that soon, or?
The appraisal?
Yeah.
I'm hoping by the end of the month.
Oh, okay, so it is.
Yeah, so David and I, we talk probably once a week, and once we get it, we'll figure out, how does that make sense? And I don't know when it's going to come in. I don't exactly know what she's anticipating selling the property for. Hopefully everything, hopefully the stars align. And what our intent would be is to buy the whole parcel. She does not want to sell us just an easement, and I, to be honest, I don't blame her. So we would buy the whole parcel, we would put the trail and the water treatment easement on it, and then we would resell it.
Yeah, MCWD does that too, a lot of times, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, good questions, thank you? Otherwise, if all of our questions have been answered and our concerns have been addressed, I'm looking for a motion to, to approve the cooperative agreement with Three Rivers Park District?
I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a regional trail cooperative agreement with Three Rivers Park District.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that as stated.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the regional trail cooperative agreement with Three Rivers Park District. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much, I think you can be on your way, thank you. Approving, next, we have our approving our City of Minnetrista Pay Equity Implementation Report. Is that, Mr. Veroni?
Yes, it is, Mayor. Mayor and council, before you tonight is our every-three-year approval of a resolution to approve the Minnetrista Pay Equity Implementation Report. That was before this council, three years ago in January, to do it, and we approved it that night, and I hope for the same result again tonight. Just to give you a little bit of background on this, this can kind of be a confusing topic at times. But it started back, what, 31 years ago, in 1984. The state adopted the Local Government Pay Equity Act, and it required that every political subdivision in the state of Minnesota, including cities, obviously, establish an equitable compensation relationships between male-dominated, female-dominated, and balanced classes of employees. And they define equitable compensation relationships as compensation for generally female-dominated classes not being consist, not being consistently below the compensation for male-dominated classes of comparable values. It's basically the copworth plan that everybody kind of refers to it as. I've utilized, once again this year, from, from Springstead, Ms. Anne Antinson, and to help me complete this report. Just as a background, ever since the law has been in place, the City of Minnetrista has always been in compliance. In fact, in my, my days, in my Eden Prairie days, we used to have to do this every year, which was kind of a pain in the, you know what? But MMB, or the Minnesota Management Budget, Budget Office, took that over a number of years ago, and they made this compliance every three years. And so now annually, they'll get a third of the Minnesota cities and counties or whoever on their rotation schedule in, and this is our year again. This is, we're reporting on our wages and, and stuff for our 2014 and January of 2015. So once again, we are in compliance. We do need to pass this resolution tonight. Even if we are in compliance and don't pass the resolution, we would be considered out of compliance. And there's, as noted in, in the staff report, you know, there's penalties and reduction in stating and stuff like that, that can go along with being out of compliance, so. So I hope we're able to do that. So the, unless there's any questions, the, the council action before you is to recommend approval of the City of Minnetrista Pay Equity Implementation Report for data as in place as of December 31st, 2014, and submit this PEIR through Springstead to the Minnesota Management Budget Office no later than January 31st of this year.
That, that's a long resolution, so.
That's why I read it.
Wait, hold on, hold on, well, there's been a motion, is there a second? Then we'll have discussion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Christians?
I just have one question.
Yes.
That's all, before doing so. It's a little confusing to me, on this chart that you have here, you've got maximum monthly salary and predicted. What's the difference between maximum and predicted?
Let me see if I can, um, not much.
No, it's very little, I'm just wondering why you have, why you're classifying two classifications?
Generally, the predicted pay is what the state tells you should, you should be paying. Not everybody's pay system is going to exactly match for those particular job titles. They're very close, and that's why we're consistently in compliance, because what we have set up for a pay program is, for our maximum salary for those job classifications is very close to what's, it's supposed to be, is predicted by the state, so. And then, there are variations within that, so somebody who's So, and then there are variations within that, so somebody who's a veteran in their job is going to be paid more at the high end versus somebody that's new to the jobs is going to be paid more at the low end. So that's why there's flexibility in the ranges and the pay differences you see between job to job, generally. It's kind of who's filling the jobs, yeah.
Good, thank you. That's all. I just wanted a quick question. Thank you.
Wait, wait, wait. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, then. All those in favor of approving the resolution for the City of Minotrista for the Pay Implementation Report, et cetera, et cetera, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have our City Administrator Contract.
This is from, I guess I'll take the lead on this, and Mayor or Councilmember Thol, if you want to jump in, certainly feel free to do so since you're both members of the Personnel Committee. But what you have before you is a number of items, all rolled into the packet item. It is the contract for hiring me as your next city administrator. In it, I have tried to do some due diligence on this, so you have the contract itself, but after the contract, what I've done is I ended up surveying a number of neighboring West Metro communities. And you can see the cities in the packet, I've asked them for kind of their starting salary when they started in their position at whichever city they started at, and then kind of where they're at now as of either late Jan, late December of 2014 or their pay in 2015 or expected pay in early 2015. And then looked at all the items such as health insurance, the health savings account contributions, if there were any, life insurance, car allowance, cell phone, deferred comp, retirement benefits, termination benefits, et cetera. And why those cities were selected are twofold. One, they're similar in size and there's an extra, the next page in there, I went to the League of Minnesota Cities website and asked to extract cities that are population range of 5,000 to 10,000, and then ranked them from greatest population down to the smallest population. And as you can see, there's 49 cities. We're kind of right in the middle, so I tried to pick some cities that were neighbors of ours above us and tried to pick some cities that were neighbor of ours below where we are population-wise, just to kind of give you a feel of where we are and where this contract is coming in on. And then after that is, I just, I decided to, I know I've been here a little over five years, but I thought I'd give you just a short synopsis of my work history for those that may or may not be as familiar with it. And so I gave you my education, professional experience, et cetera. So, in short, my resume. So I don't know if the mayor or the councilmember Thol would like to add anything to this.
The only thing is, it wouldn't be in the contract, but we discussed a probationary period, if you will. That's pretty typical, just in case there's any changes you might want to make, I'm sure we won't, but it's pretty typical to do a six-month probation period. And that's the only thing I would say is, we, Ms. Thol and I are recommending approval as presented to you, again with just a six-month probationary period. Is that...
Well, I'm in favor of the, actually, I think I have in there that there would be a six-month check-in on probation. It would be enough of a review of my performance to date. The full performance at a year would be a much more detailed one, so it'd be kind of two pieces. I'm fine with both, check-in, six-month and full year, so...
Yeah, I guess we call that check-in.
And then it would be for a performance-only probation. Typically, new hires here, they're not able to use their vacation time during their hire and I'd like to be able to use my vacation time during my probation. We did the same kind of probation when Mr. Abel was promoted to Community Development Director and when Mr. Grimm was rehired back as the Finance Director. So we did those performance-only probation periods, so they're able to use time off for vacation and sick leave, et cetera.
And there would be no extra cost to the city for that?
I only have one question. Mike, did you ask somebody to draw this up or is it a third party or, I mean, how did the contract come to? I don't have a problem with it, I just...
Yeah. Well, I put together the contract based on the contracts I received from those other cities that you see in here quoted. I asked not only just for that info, but I asked to get a copy of their contract, so...
So the contract, the verbiage in the contract, actually you put together or...
I put it together based on other contracts from neighboring cities, yes. And then Mr. Grimm was involved in the discussion with the Personnel Committee, so I wasn't only in discussion with the members of, the elected members of the Personnel Committee by myself. I didn't think it was appropriate to be there just by myself. So Mr. Grimm was a participant in that as well. And his role in that was not only just be a checks and balance against mine, but also to advise them if the dollar amount that's being asked for in the contract was appropriate based on the budget available. And it is.
I was just curious whether you did it yourself or you had some corporate attorney do it?
No.
No, I was good. Thank you.
I did get a review from Rod Baby, our attorney, so he took a look at this as well.
Only question.
Okay.
Ms. Thol, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay.
I think the language of the contract is pretty standard and so...
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract with Mr. Veroni for our new city administrator.
I make a motion to approve the agreement with Mr. Michael Veroni under the terms and conditions detailed in the agreement for Mr. Veroni to be the city administrator for the City of Minotrista effective January 21st, 2015.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes and congratulations, Mr. Veroni, and please change your voicemail.
I will. I haven't been touched for a while. I appreciate the opportunity to work here. I've really enjoyed working here since I was hired back in October of 2009 in my other capacity. I would say it's been quite an adventure over the last, I guess, eight months or so as the interim. It's been very challenging, very rewarding. It's been great to work with all the members of the council, but you know, it has kind of a heck of a ride. It's been an interesting history we've had over the last few months, but I'm looking forward to working with all of you and also with our staff, and we've got a great staff as you know. And just wanted to kind of piggyback on that, I guess, with our next item we're talking about as we brought up at the work session, so...
Okay. The HR Communications Specialist Manager title, to be determined.
To be determined, correct.
Okay.
So as discussed in our work session a little earlier this evening, my goal into filling back, I guess now my old position of Assistant City Administrator is not to use that title or job description, but instead to go forward and with your approval tonight, what I would like to do is just kind of how I did with the building official position, which was new for our city, is use our consultant to put together a job description that would give us a pay range and bring that back to a future council meeting for your approval so we can begin work on trying to staff back that headcount. Obviously, it's not going to be the same position, but headcount. And as I mentioned a little earlier this evening, my guess is that the position will probably pay less than the Assistant City Administrator position paid because of the level of responsibility that we won't have in that position. Be more of a doer versus a manager, so...
So we did discuss this at the work session. We just needed to bring it back to the regular council meeting because we don't make decisions there. So I guess I'm looking for a motion to give staff the go-ahead to start exploring, if you will, I guess that would be the best way, to hire an HR Communications Specialist. Is that...
That's correct, yeah.
Correct?
That will do.
Okay.
I'll make that motion as Lisa says, David.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to direct staff to explore the HR Communications Specialist position for the City of Minotrista. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. That concludes our business items. We're going to have a brief council reports and then a brief update on our water treatment facility or update for the water treatment plant and a few other staff reports. So with that, let's see, council reports, I will start. As you know, we did the Personnel Committee meeting. You know the results of that.
We have to do claims first.
I thought, I thought we did claims afterwards. I'm sorry. Approving claims. Yep, okay. We can do that now. That's fine. We'll approve claims then. Are there any questions regarding the claims? If not, a motion to approve is in order?
Motion to approve the claims is written.
Okay. Any second? Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the claims as presented. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Now we'll do reports. So Personnel Committee, we met, Ms. Thol and Mr. Veroni and Mr. Grimm and I. You know the outcome of that. I will be attending the January Planning Commission. As you know, that'll be on a rotating basis and that'll be next Monday, I believe. And I also attended the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities and this is where I was talking about some networking. That's just one opportunity for the city. We had Gary Carlson and another lady, Patricia, I can't remember her last name, sorry, from the League of Minnesota Cities and the League of Municipalities there, kind of updating us on the legislative session that was up and coming and just getting started. They'll come back and give us some more updates as the session moves along and how it might pertain to the cities. They don't know yet if levy limits are going to be in place. It's not on the table at this time. Let's hope they're not because that could be a huge issue for us. Let's see. I also attended, have to remember all the names of these things, CAPSH, that's the Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin. Again, it was mayors from this area were invited to this and it's an organization that provides services to people in suburban Hennepin County that are in need of financial assistance of some sort or services that they maybe not be able to afford for themselves. And although many of us think, oh, here in Minotrista, we're wealthy and we don't have that need, there still may be people, some people in our community, maybe through various circumstances, might be in need of such services. So it's a good organization to know about. The other thing, and then I also had the opportunity to meet more mayors from surrounding cities as well. And then I also attended the Regional Council of Mayors Forum, which was last Monday, and that was, I also had an opportunity to meet more mayors in the area and talk to them about different issues that their cities have. I also attended the Pioneer Sarah Creek Watershed Commission with Pam, with Ms. Mortensen, and I'll allow her to give the report on that. With that, I am finished. Ms. Thol?
I attended the Parks Commission meeting this past week and we discussed the Baker-Carver Regional Trail, which a lot of it was covered this evening. One of the concerns that was raised was for the Horse Trail or Equestrian Trail and they're going to be looking at incorporating that as they go into the development on that. We also discussed Gillespie Park and that area. Several residents were present. Their concern was safety and just as far as, you know, on the dock and children out there without life jackets, anything like that. Mr. Gillespie won't be here to police that as he did in the past. And also parking, if there would be visitors to the park who weren't from the neighborhood, where are those cars going to park and is that going to interfere with the residents in that area? At that point, it was pretty much assigned to Mr. Abel and Nick Olson to come up with some suggestions for the next Park Commission meeting, which will be next month.
Correct.
Right? As opposed to theoretically, meaning quarterly. So, and did you want to say any more on that, Mr. Abel?
No, I think you summarized that very well. It's still a work in progress for the master plan for Gillespie Park, so expect that in the next month or two to be brought back to council as a park commission recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Vanderlinde?
I have none.
Okay. Ms. Mortensen?
I did attend the Pioneer Sarah Creek Watershed Management Commission and the majority of our meeting, we spent a lot of time talking, reviewing the third generation 10-year plan that was submitted to Bowser for approval. Bowser reviewed the plan and the outcome was very disappointing to the commission. They approved it only on a six-year plan and not a 10-year. And the main reason for that was they did not feel confident that the commission had the ability to pay for the projects that were projected. Right now, Pioneer Commission is, they grant only 10% back for the project. On an average, it's more like 25% and the commission just does not want to go there at this point. So what they left it at is members of that commission are planning to meet again with Bowser and play our case again and see if we can get them to go with the 10-year plan, perhaps give us five years as a commission to prove that we can do it and be on track for achieving that 10-year plan and go from there. So I think this is something that we should probably, with staff, sit down, decide, do we want to stay with Pioneer and pay the membership fee? Is it $12,000 that we pay right now for that? Continue to pay for that or, you know, go in a different direction at this point?
Yeah, that would probably have to be a work session discussion, so maybe sometime during the year. We could not opt out this year, if you will. And then there's a lot more to opting out than just saying we don't want to participate. It's not as easy as that, so, but maybe staff could give us a report on how that might work or not work or whatever, but I think we need to look at all the options, so, thank you. And it wasn't the, just for clarification, it was the Bowser Committee and the full board review is on the 27th. And so I think several people from the commission are going to be going to that to try and, like you said, plead their case. The issue is the six years because then the commission would have to go back and redo their entire plan in six years versus 10 years and that means a lot more money. So it means the money for the planning process, six years versus in 10 years. So that's one of the big issues. Okay? Thank you very much. Mr. Christians, anything?
Just something real brief. Thursday, this last Thursday, I attended the WCC meeting, the Weston Community Commerce meeting, and for those of you, for your information, WCC, Weston Community Commerce, is made up of a number of the surrounding businesses within the community along with the cities, certain cities and churches. In that event and within that plan, the plan that works right now is to do another Moonlight Trail. I don't know if any of you have ever participated in the Moonlight Trail in the past, but it's kind of a fun event. It starts out by the Minnetoka Drive-In and starts there and goes all the way to Gail Woods. And the businesses who participate in that will have little booths and stands and, you know, give you little treats as you walk the trail. And it's kind of a fun thing if the weather's nice, okay?
Yeah, if the weather's nice.
If the weather's nice, it's nice, okay. And I, myself, have participated in each year. And in order to participate in that, there's three, actually, three different levels. My company participated on a level just basically giving an exposure, which gives you a little ad in the paper that you're participating in it. And then, of course, the next level is you can have yourself a little stand and, you know, the networking part of it, if you want to call it that. So that's coming up. Things aren't totally finalized yet, but the president of WCC is Kelly Gillespie, who is also obviously the councilmember of Mount, and the treasurer for that, who's coordinating that, is Kirk Nelson, who is the branch manager of Minnesota State Bank. So we're going to participate, or my company's going to participate, on the level of just $75. It's very inexpensive to do, to support it. I don't know if that's something you want, we want to do as Minotrista. It will show support from Minotrista for a $75 sponsorship, so we got it too. And if you choose to...
Are you making that recommendation?
I would make that recommendation to participate and if we choose to do that, Mr. Veroni, you would have to contact Kelly Gillespie or you can contact Kirk Nelson, either one, if you want to participate. And I think it'd be a good thing because it shows networking.
Sure. And it shows community support, business support.
And $75.
Yeah. So if I understand you correctly, that was a motion?
Well, I wanted to throw that out and discuss it about whether or not, what your thoughts were on that. I would make a motion to participate in that and donate the $75 to support the Moonlight Trail.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. What are your thoughts?
Like you say, I think it'd be good support, community support, business support, yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, a good thing.
A very small fee.
Yeah, for a very small, yeah. Is there any other thing, anything else the city would have to do, or?
Not a thing, it's just a sport, it will, it will get you some recognition, it will get us some recognition. And I thought about the fact, should the city, or would the city be interested in having a little?
Booth or kiosk, table, kiosk.
Kiosk, yeah. And, you know, that's maybe asking a little bit too much. I, I think if we just show support, the $75 will get us some recognition and some support, I think it'd be great.
Okay, then all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, I assume we can find that in the budget? Thank you. Next, we have staff reports, we are running up against our nine o'clock deadline because of the video, can we do it in 10 minutes or less?
I'm going to try.
Okay.
Hang with me, Isaac. Who's in the back there. Three items says one, but I've got three.
Yeah.
The water treatment update, did have a chance to speak with both Candace Hanson from Mount and Brenda Fisk from St. Bonnie. Brought to them the thoughts and, and that were brought forward at our last council meeting about maybe connecting with them, kind of one last great chance to, let's talk, work together. What they told me is St. Bonnie, I believe they have a meeting tomorrow night, I think they're going to, Brenda said she's going to try and bring it up there at the council meeting, or Mr. Wyble will, their mayor. Candace told me that the next, they, they were able to put it out, they would be able to put it on their January 27th meeting, which is next week. So I should be able to hear back from both of them and what their intentions are before we meet again, which is our early February meeting, so. Find out where they're at. So, kind of took a, a bit of a siesta here on the water treatment project for at least a council meeting, so, but that's kind of where we're at on that. Second one, I'll talk about, the next one I'll talk about is.
Council staff retreat?
Yeah, I'll talk about that one last.
Okay.
The, the next one I'm going to talk about is the council chambers. We've, a number of council members have mentioned to me that, from citizens, not just themselves, but also themselves. That the speaker system within this particular council chambers is not great. It's a balance between trying to make sure that the audio on the recording is good, and then trying to make sure the, the audio in the council chambers is good. And that balance has basically demonstrated to us that if we crank up the volume sort of to hear it here, the audio on the recording is kind of cruddy. So our preference is, at the moment, was to kind of have our participants here in the council chambers kind of endure the bad audio. Those are really old speakers you see hanging, those white ones, kind of faced towards each other, I'm not even sure if they're working all that well, to be honest with you. So I met with EPA Audio Visual Consultant Ken Conkell, he was the guy that helped us orchestrate the cameras and all the stuff that we put in here this last year. And he's going to give me a proposal, and I'll bring that back to you. Generally, the idea would be to mount some speakers and kind of wash the sound towards the audience.
Okay.
But to make sure that we have some, there's a second option he'll give us that'll kind of help us. But I think, what I told him, and correct me if I wrong anybody, I don't think it's very difficult for us to hear each other, it's just the audience hearing us.
Right.
I'm taking, I'm going from that, but he's going to give me two quotes, and we'll see what the cost difference is.
Okay.
The last one, most importantly.
You have seven minutes.
I know. Is the council staff meetings, retreats, whatever you want to call it. Did have an opportunity to get late this afternoon from Craig Rapp, who's the consultant that we've used the past couple of years to propose a, give me a proposal for team-building strategic planning services. I'm going to, I'm going to give you a short overview in a minute, but what we're looking for, if I could find my notes.
Two dates?
Yep, two dates. We narrowed it down based on staff availability, and this is the acid test to find out if council's available on these nights. We're looking at Mondays, they're not council meeting Mondays, they're the off-meeting Mondays. So we're looking at February 9th and February 23rd. February 9th, the options could be, this, this would be, I'll just tell you what it is. It's a effective governance, roles, responsibilities, leadership, looking at about three, maybe four-hour session. It'd be a late afternoon, early evening, some combination thereof, we could get dinner on Friday, or, I'm sorry, on Monday, February 9th. The one on February 23rd, that also happens to be planning commission night. So we wouldn't want somebody, whichever person's turn it is to go to planning commission to leave and go to planning commission, that starts at 7:00, so we'd have to be done before 7:00. Again, it could be a late afternoon and right up until 7:00. So I don't know what your calendars are like for May 9th and for.
February.
I'm sorry.
February 9th.
I might think of May. February 9th, February 23rd, those are both Mondays. If anybody's out of town, that's kind of a buzzkill on that date, but. People available?
9th, yes, February 23rd, I'll be out of, so.
Okay, so it looks like we're going with the 9th, which is probably a little bit more flexible.
Mr. Vanderlinde, are you available the 9th?
We're just going to play it, see what's what happens, I'll, I'll do my best.
Okay.
Get it that way.
Okay, so we'll go with February 9th?
Right. Overall, what is.
Do we need to pick another date, then, for the second?
I'm going to go with the 9th, he said.
No, I mean for the second session.
What we'll do is we'll pick second or future sessions at the 9th, so we'll have people bring calendars on the 9th.
Okay, spring your calendars on the 9th.
Yep.
And we have a time?
You tell me, would you like to do a late afternoon and early evening, because if it's three to four hours, I don't want to start at like 6:00.
Yes, yes.
So you want to start 3:00?
That's fine.
3:30, something like that?
That works, 3:00, okay.
Then we'll maybe get some break for dinner, bring them something.
All right.
Get out of here about 7:00, 6:30, 7:00.
All right.
That'd be appreciated. This is part, and previous council, including Mr. Christians and Mr. Vanderlinde, kind of did the full monty with Craig Rapp two years ago. We kind of want to go back to that, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One, the election cycle kind of generates new council members, obviously, but it also gives us a chance to kind of revisit it in full. So last year, we did kind of a check-in, we don't want to do that, we want to kind of give all council members, new team. I kind of knew administrator as of an hour ago, half an hour ago, et cetera, it gives us a chance to do some team building. So the first session would be develop administrative questionnaire, you would get that sent to you, you mail it back. He'd summarize the results, and then we work from there on doing some team building and reviewing the strategic plan, not all at once, but just maybe focusing on team building. And then schedule some future sessions, and I, like I said, I just got this draft thing 4:30 today. So all in, the, the total fee that he's talking about, now, we're not talking about just this one session, we're talking about the first session, followed by another couple of sessions. We're looking at four to six hours of stuff after that, and then possibly, or, I'm sorry, two sessions, one three to four hours, another one be sort of the.
Wrap-up?
Yes, be sort of the retreat, it could be a two-day or Friday, Saturday kind of thing, and we'll talk about that. And then possibly a final session, as we did two years ago, with staff only. And his proposal's at $6,950. The optional session would be $2,000, that would be staff, staff only, so. So like I said, this, and Mr. Rapp, Rapp comes highly recommended, and I know council member Christians and Vanderlinde have worked with him, so. The only reason I'm trying to bring up the dollar amount now is that I need to secure this, it would be, I can bring back the non-draft or the full proposal on the 2nd, but we're going to meet on the 9th, and I just want to kind of get a good place.
What is in the budget for this?
I believe so, I believe, I talked with Mr. Grimm about this, I believe we could find some money for this. So, so, if, if so moved, I'll bring back a full proposal with a yes to him, and we can go through stuff, and then kind of schedule up the 9th and go from there.
Honestly, I was expecting it to cost a whole lot more.
Really?
Yeah.
It wasn't as expensive as you thought.
Okay, questions, comments, yeas, nays, you want to move forward?
So go on Feb. 9th, 3:00 PM, I'll bring back on the Feb. 2 council meeting, or the proposal, you know, non-draft form.
Okay.
And we can vote on it that night, but, and then you'll have a copy, and we can see what we're talking about. Tried to summarize it in the 10 seconds I have.
Okay, all right.
So, I'm not voting for a motion tonight, but we'll bring it back.
March, march forward.
March forward, in February, we'll be march forward.
All right, that concludes our meeting, and we are not at nine o'clock, but I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, second, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.